Okay, we're going to go and get started. I'd like to welcome everybody tonight to our workshop meeting of Kingsburg City Council on Planning Commission. Today is Thursday, October 24th, 2024. I'd like to call this meeting to order. First thing on the agenda is to approve the agenda and get a motion, please.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next on the agenda, we have presentations and information reports. Tonight, we have none. Next, we have public comment. Public comment provides an opportunity for members of the public to address the City Council and the Commission on Items of Interest to the public within the council and the commission's jurisdiction and which are not, excuse me, which are not already on the agenda this evening. It is the policy of the council and the commission to answer questions impromptu. Speakers should limit their comments to not more than three minutes. For items which are on the agenda this evening, members of the public will be provided an opportunity to address the council and the board on each item as each item is brought up for discussion. Do we have anybody here tonight that would like to speak on public comment?
Darren Fraser, Mid Valley Times. I just had a question. Do you with the council have any comment on the Chamber of Commerce closing tomorrow?
I don't believe we will bring up that subject tonight at all. That's probably, we might bring that up in our next city council meeting, but not tonight. But thank you for the question. Anybody else? Prepare for public comment? Okay, hearing none, then I will close public comment. Next, we have regular calendar. Kingsburg Focus General Plan. Presentation by Community Development Director Holly Owen.
Thank you. Thank you for all those who have attended and really appreciate your turnout. We want to do this, and I'll introduce this in a rather brief fashion because we've got some material to cover tonight. I wanted to introduce Sarah Allender. She will be presenting for Provence Pritchard. She has her able assistant with her, Alejandra, in the back there. And I wanted to just give a brief overview as to why, you know, why we're here. We're in workshop two at this point. So just to review, every city and county is required to have a general plan for their community. It outlines specific requirements and state guidelines do that. And the general plan establishes development policies and really is the bible and the vision for long-range development in each community. Our last general plan was updated 30 years ago, and it needs to be updated for a number of reasons, but there are some legislative requirements that need to be included to make sure that it is, it's an update that is necessary at this time. They, the consultants have completed an assessment report to use in updating the general plan. And additionally, there's a legislative review that will be presented tonight that includes laws and requirements that have come about since the plan was first created and last adopted. One of the important ones is a Senate Bill 379, which is a climate adaptation bill, and that includes a vulnerability assessment to identify likely hazards that may, that may impact Kingsburg. There's also SB 1000, which is a general, a bigger lift. It's called Planning for Healthy Communities Act, and it requires the general plan to assess health risks impacting our communities and how, to consider how improvements are distributed. So the assessment report that is with you tonight identifies all those legislative bills. We will have a PowerPoint and a brief presentation about this. This is workshop two again of three workshops. We should have another one shortly after the new year that will be, be an audit report, and then we'll be on our way to the draft document. So again, this is, this is information only. It's, you'll receive the presentation. We will solicit any public input and hold a discussion and then give direction, if so desired, to Provence Pritchard and the city staff. This concludes my presentation, and I appreciate your attendance again.
Thank you, Holly.
All right. Good evening. It's good to be back. Oh, doing this sideways is... Okay. So as Holly mentioned, my name's Sarah Allender. I'm the project manager for the focused general plan update for City of Kingsburg. I was last here a couple of months ago. Good to be back for the second public workshop. As Holly mentioned, this is our second public workshop. We anticipate holding our next workshop sometime in January. I will talk about next steps, but overall, we are still on track for completion date anticipated for fall of '25. We do have workshops programmed over the project timeline, essentially occurring after every major deliverable. So our next major deliverable will be that audit report, which will be delivered to the city in December for review, and then we'll be back, we anticipate, in January for a workshop on that topic. So tonight is all about presenting what is termed the Legislative Review and Assessment Report. As you might imagine, it's going to be a fun night. But the purpose of this report is really to identify what the new legislative requirements are for general plans that have been enacted since 1992. That's the last time you went through a comprehensive update. So there are quite a few bills. So tonight, I will highlight what those new bills are and then also determine whether or not they are applicable to the City of Kingsburg. There's a few that you do need to worry about and comply with, but there's also a few that do not apply to Kingsburg as well. So the Legislative Assessment Report really documents which bills do apply to Kingsburg, and then it is also documenting the assessment that is required for some of those bills. Notably, as Holly mentioned, there's the vulnerability assessment that's required for SB 379, and then there is a community analysis, as we're terming it, for SB 1000, which are both documented in the report. The report is going to be used to inform next steps. There are some policy considerations and recommendations in the report. I will highlight what those are. There are no, you know, no distinct language that's been determined at this time. We just want to flag what some of the considerations will be as we move through the update process, and we start to look at your specific existing goals and policies and seeing what changes, if any, need to be made to those. So the report is organized into three primary sections. The introduction and purpose section. Of that section, I'm going to be presenting the legislative context. That's just presenting what those new bills are and how they apply or don't to Kingsburg. The second section is the Climate Adaptation and Resiliency section. I will be presenting and mostly summarizing the vulnerability assessment assigned findings. And then the last section is the Planning for Healthy Communities and Environmental Justice section. This is focused on compliance with SB 1000, and I'll be highlighting the results and recommendations of the community analysis that we prepared in compliance with that So first up is the legislative content. What new bills are we dealing with? There have been about 10 bills enacted that applied to general plans since 1992. I will say, most of those have happened in the last probably 10 years. And there are two of those 10 bills that require specific assessments. We have already touched on these. They're going to be the focus. They are the focus of the report, and then I'll touch on these during the presentation. It's that vulnerability assessment and also the community analysis. There are two bills of those 10 that require specific information be included in the general plan. Those include wildfire risk and flooding. I will say that you don't actually have any wildfire risk areas in City of Kingsburg or the planning area. You also don't have any flooding areas in the City of Kingsburg, but the bill still requires us to include certain information. That information is actually documented in the report for tonight, so we will not need to address it any further as part of the update. This report is just being treated as documentation for satisfying those particular bill requirements, even though you don't have wildfire risk and flooding in the planning area. Three of the bills do require us to give some consideration for how your general plan is addressing certain topics. Those include air quality, complete streets. Complete streets is really just talking about ensuring that your roadway system not only accommodates vehicles, but you're also considering how walkers and bicyclists move through the space. And then there's also a newer bill for transportation planning. It's fairly hyper-focused on this new approach for roadway networks, and it's called the Safe System Approach, but does a lot of the same things that the complete streets bill would require. It's really just about making the space safe for all users of the road. So we're just acknowledging in this report that these are topics that we're going to have to look at in more detail and compare them to your existing goals and policies to make sure your existing general plan appropriately addresses what these bills are requiring. And the final three bills do not apply to Kingsburg. There's evacuation routes. These are generally limited to hazard areas, mostly tied to wildfire. You don't have wildfire risks, and it's also tied to areas of residential development that only have one outlet. That's not the case here in Kingsburg, so you do not need to deal with this in your update. There's also disadvantaged unincorporated communities. This is focused on disadvantaged unincorporated communities, specifically any that would be located in your planning area. You do not have any within your planning area, so this is a bill that we do not need to address as part of the update. And then finally, there is actually two bills related to military readiness. This is all about identifying any military facilities and making sure that we are communicating with the appropriate military units. But you do not have any military facilities in the planning area, so this is also another bill that we have already determined does not apply to Kingsburg. We have documented that these do not apply in the report, and so that is all we will need to do to address these bills moving forward. That sums up the new general plan requirements. I will keep this fairly high level, but again, I will be happy to take questions. So I might pause for questions if there are any so far, just so I'm not talking for 30 minutes straight. But if there are none, I will move into the vulnerability assessment, and this is really related to climate adaptation planning. The legislation that is driving this requirement is SB 379, and it is requiring all cities and counties to address the impacts of climate change in their communities, specifically through their general plan. And it really focuses on adaptation versus mitigation. We all are probably more familiar than we care to be with mitigation. That's the term that shows up in environmental documents all the time, and mitigation is all about reducing the occurrence of something. Adaptation planning, on the other hand, is acknowledging that these things may happen, and we just want to have a strategy in place to deal with it. An example is greenhouse gas emissions is something that we always look to mitigate in environmental documents. On the adaptation planning side, one of the related impacts is extreme heat days. We know those are going to happen, so the adaptation strategy is acknowledging that's going to happen and making sure we have a strategy such as offering cooling centers to respond to those extreme heat days. So that's the distinction between mitigation and adaptation planning. So 379 focuses on adaptation planning, and the approach here is generally split into two phases. The first phase is all about identifying what your risks are. That's what the vulnerability assessment does. And then the second phase is being able to identify what strategies you as a community would like to integrate into your general plan in order to respond to the risks that have been identified through that vulnerability assessment. So we are really just talking about Phase One tonight, the vulnerability assessment. The methodology for the vulnerability assessment in Kingsburg is to really take advantage of work that has already been done. You are a participating agency in the Fresno County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is long. I'm probably just going to refer to it as the LHMP from here on out. But because you are a participating agency, the LHMP did the vulnerability assessment for you. So our strategy was to review that document. We also wanted to make sure that it met the requirements of 379, so we evaluated the vulnerability assessment that was completed within the LHMP. And then we wanted to identify any considerations that we may want to have as part of the update process. And the considerations would be those beyond what has already been identified as a goal or objective in the LHMP or is already, or is not addressed in your existing Kingsburg general plan policies already. So the LHMP vulnerability assessment, I'm just going to focus on what they term the annex, excuse me. And the annex is specific to Kingsburg. The LHMP does address a lot of hazards that are county-wide. Not everything is going to be applicable for Kingsburg. So the Kingsburg annex only identifies and discusses the hazards that are up on your screen. The color coding really just relates to how the overall risk was identified in that LHMP. So the items in red are identified with a high overall risk. The items in orange are medium, and then the wildfire or one green is low. And I will say that the rating of overall risk really takes into a lot of different factors. So it takes into factors like how often is this even going to occur? Do we think it could occur? And if it does occur, what would be impact? So it's a bit of a weighted factor. So if something does not seem that intuitive up there, as far as it being low, medium, or high, there is a reason for that, and it's because it's weighing a lot of different factors that went into the hazard identification. The other items that were considered as part of the vulnerability assessment in the LHMP, they looked at assets that would be at risk. These were really focused on critical facilities that you have and making sure that those are protected, critical facilities or anything that would be used for emergency response and management or service provision. The LHMP also identifies what the vulnerabilities are and the potential losses. There was some attempt to estimate a potential dollar number of loss as well in the LHMP assessment, so that is in that document. And then it also looked at the community's capacity to respond to hazards, and they look at it in a few different ways. The first is what regulations or adopted policies and plans do you have in place that would help you respond to risks and hazards? What is your administrative capacity to respond to hazards? Do you have roles designated? You do have an emergency manager, actually. That's the city manager. Congratulations. It also considers financial capacity. How well do you communicate with your community information? And then it also identifies what they call other mitigation efforts, which just identify things that Kingsburg has already done at the time that LHMP had been drafted that show that you are well-equipped to deal with any of the hazards that have been identified in that document. So that I'm clearly not getting into too many details. Again, I'm happy to answer questions, but I did want to just summarize some of the findings, and that is that the vulnerability assessment in the LHMP does satisfy the requirements for the City of Kingsburg in accordance with SB 379. So we did not have to do any additional assessment to satisfy those requirements. That's great news. And the LHMP itself concluded that Kingsburg was well-equipped to address hazards. So they did not have that many recommendations in that document itself for Kingsburg to implement. So our recommendation and our strategy is take the work that's been done, which satisfies the bill requirements, and we will be incorporating it by reference into your general plan. And that way, we're going to be drawing a more direct line between your general plan and the work that's been done to satisfy the requirements under SB 379. We did identify two additional policy considerations. Again, we are not proposing policies on these topics. These are just items that we will consider as we're moving through this process. But two areas that we did want to specifically consider have to do with earthquakes, and that's just to look at potentially addressing unreinforced masonry, mostly near downtown, where older buildings are, and then also identify any potential policies related to reducing the urban heat island effect. Those mostly look at things like, how many trees do you have? Are you shading, landscaping, anything to reduce that hard pavement? And that is the summary and recommendations for the vulnerability assessment. Are there questions? We can pause there? Yes?
On the address unreinforced masonry in downtown, what type of policy? What's an example of something?
Those are usually, I mean, it's a general plan policy level, so it's usually, consider studying if you have any unreinforced masonries, doing an inventory, just to understand what those buildings are. It's usually driven, it's usually study-driven policy. So that will be part of the conversation as to whether or not a policy like that is necessary, how we want to phrase it in the general plan, how directive we want to be. Okay. The last topic is Planning for Healthy Communities. This is the analysis that is being driven by SB 1000. It is the Planning for Healthy Communities Act, which is more commonly referred to as environmental justice. And this bill requires cities and counties to address health risks to disadvantaged communities. Kingsburg is identified as a disadvantaged community under the term of this bill. The way this bill determines disadvantaged communities is it bases the determination off of a mapping tool prepared by California Environmental Protection Agency called Cal EnviroScreen. It's census tract-based data, and there are a number of factors that go into it. One of the factors is air quality, so pollution exposure based on air quality. And I will say, I've not worked with a community in the San Joaquin Valley that is not identified as a disadvantaged community in the San Joaquin Valley because of our air issues. So based on that mapping, Kingsburg is subject to SB 1000. This bill does focus on six different categories for health risks: pollution exposure and air quality, air quality being the primary driver. We look at public facilities, food access, which is usually looking at healthy food access, evaluating whether or not there are any food deserts. We also look at safe and sanitary homes. There is a very big tie-in here to your housing element, so much of this content is actually addressed within your housing element, which you've just gone through. We also look at physical activity. This is generally driven around opportunities for physical activity. So how robust is your active transportation network? Can people get out and walk and bike? And we also look at park facilities and distribution of parks, and can people get to them? And then the final topic we look at is community engagement, because part of the equity here is we want to make sure that everybody in the community has an opportunity to participate in meetings like this or other decision-making opportunities. So I'm going to run through these six topics and do it fairly quickly again, but I will be focusing on the methodology, what we're mapping and looking at in any given topic, and then identify sort of the main takeaways and if there are any recommendations. I do want to note the methodology for this approach, though. The way that we approach SB 1000 is really focusing on the Planning for Healthy Communities aspect of the act, and so we look at different facilities and resources and how equitable those are across the community, not just focusing on any one area. So our methodology is we conduct what we term a community analysis. This is doing a lot of things, but includes mapping of facilities and locations. And then we also consider existing city practice. So how are making, how are you making decisions and how you want to invest funds and make improvements across the community and making sure that there is an equity there? So we will evaluate the distribution of facilities as well as how you are investing your resources, and then again, we have identified some policy considerations on this topic. So the first topic is pollution and air quality. Air pollution and proximity to air pollution sources is what we are mapping in this exercise, and there's really two primary pollution sources that we're looking at. The first is highways, just with the level of traffic moving on those roadways, and then gas stations. There are different recommended buffers associated with each of these facilities. You can see it on the mapping for the highway facility. Gas stations, it's a pretty small buffer, so it's not showing up on the map. But our takeaway from the mapping exercise is really that most of your sensitive uses, residential uses primarily, are generally well-located away from the pollution sources. Yes, there will be some within the buffer areas, which is not atypical, but there is an over-concentration of those sensitive uses within the buffer areas. We do have a recommendation, which is a fairly standard recommendation, and that is to consider citing recommendations from the California Air Resources Board. They have a guideline that identifies recommended buffers. It's mostly focused for new development because those guidelines also recognize that existing development is in place. So it's for new development moving forward. We will generally phrase this as a consideration and not a requirement, though. So the other item that I would wanted to touch on is the hazardous sites and proximity to those, only because we do have some locations mapped. These sites are identified through a database called EnviroStore, but when we looked at each of the individual site, these sites are generally all being addressed. There are cleanup programs associated with these sites, so we did not have any additional policies to identify at this time. So the second category for the community analysis is public facilities. This is sort of a broad category. So this topic, we looked at distribution and investment for a number of different facilities and services, and then we've just broke it down into four categories so we can think about it a little bit more streamlined. The first category is public services and utilities. This is going to be water, wastewater, storm drainage. We also consider a location for police and fire stations in this category. The second category is streets and transit services. So your roadway network, what kind of condition is it in? How do you make improvements? Where is transit located? The third category is healthcare and emergency services. So we map what medical facilities are available in the community, as well as consider the location for fire and police stations because they are your first responders. And then finally, public and community services. And so this is going to be things like government buildings, city hall, the library, the community center. And we aren't, in our evaluation, yes, we're looking at distribution. Where are they located in your community? But we also look at how easy is it to get to these locations. I mean, as an example, you have one library that's only going to be located in one area of your community, but that's why we look at how easy is it to get to that one location in your community. So we have three main categories that we use in the evaluation. The first is distribution and access. The second is what is the condition of those facilities and services? How good are they? And then the last is we look at your operational capacity and your capacity to accommodate for future demand and growth. So for each of those four categories, one slide. So the first is public services and utilities. The summary here is the distribution and access for these are equitable within your community or fairly small communities, so that is fairly easy to identify. Conditions are good for these public services and utilities, and your capacity for future demand is either good or adequate for any of these given topics. Our recommendation here just acknowledges, I think, what we all know. We need to monitor how growth and development occur and make sure that we're continuing to provide services, services and infrastructure and maintaining the level of service for Kingsburg. So for streets and transit services, we did look at, you'll see the figure, this is your pavement conditions survey. All these figures are straight from the report, but we did not find anything that was surprising. I mean, the red are the streets that could use some improvements. They're generally located in your downtown area. That is not a surprise because those are your older roadways. But we also looked at how you're making investments through things like your CIP, and you are basing those decisions based on need, not necessarily area of the community. So the distribution and access is considered to be equitable for streets and transit services. Conditions are good or adequate, and again, you're And again, your capacity for addressing future demands is considered good. So we did not have any additional recommendations at this time. The third topic within public facilities is healthcare and emergency services. This is an exercise where we mapped where medical facilities are located. Most of them are located downtown. But again, that's where we also look at how well can people get to them? So distribution and access is considered equitable. Conditions are good, and future capacity is also good. So we did not have any additional policy recommendations at this time for this topic. And the last topic under public facilities, we really looked at mostly government buildings. I know we're mapping parks here because we did one community amenities map. But same summary as the last topic where it's equitable distribution and access. Your conditions are good, and future capacity is considered good. So we did not have additional policies that were identified as part of this process at this time. So on to our third topic, which is food access. Again, I mentioned it's really focused on how well people can access healthy food options. We mapped two primary healthy food locations. That is grocery stores and then also farmers' markets. We also identified a walk shed around each of those locations. Most people can walk to these facilities if they would like. But even for those who are outside of that sort of typical walk shed, most people in Kingsburg has a car, and so that did not present a barrier to access to healthy food locations. So we did not have any additional policies at this time. For safe and sanitary homes, I mentioned most of this is addressed also through your housing element. So we really just wanted to make sure that we, anything that we're looking at is going to remain consistent with your housing element because that is an element that we are not touching as part of this update, seeing as how you've just gone through that process. Some of the observations, though, and these are consistent with the housing element observations, is that older homes are at risk of containing toxic substances. That has to do with how certain materials were regulated or not regulated, which is typical. There is minimal overcrowding in Kingsburg. There's a slightly higher chance of overcrowding on the west side, I believe, was the outcome or observation. And then just over a quarter of Kingsburg households are considered cost-burdened. That generally is a 30% of your income threshold. So some of the recommendations here are really focused on recommendations that are not already addressed in your housing element. And again, these are considerations that we'll make. We're not recommending policies at this time, but we will be discussing them further over the update process. And that's just things like communicating warning signs when it comes to older homes, especially lead, asbestos, as people are starting to do construction, encouraging construction of affordable housing or multi-generational housing. So the fifth topic is physical activity. Again, I mentioned this is just providing for the opportunity to be physically active. So we are looking at a couple of components that we mapped, and that is existing as well as planned park facilities and then also active transportation facilities, which is essentially walking and biking facilities. Some of the takeaways is that most of Kingsburg has access to either of these resources. You have really good coverage. One observation is that your bike infrastructure is more limited. And so there was a recommendation to identify any gaps in the bikeway network and potentially assess the quality of infrastructure. So we're staying up with maintenance and making sure that the facilities you do have are safe. And the final topic, civic engagement. Kingsburg's public meetings are hosted where we are right now, at City Hall. There is online access through Facebook. You post meeting recordings to your YouTube channel. You have a great newsletter. I know every time I come to your website, I get a pop-up to sign up. So you have good infrastructure in place for communicating or making the opportunity to receive information available to your community. The only recommendation here, which is more of a standard recommendation, is just to start to consider for project-specific items. You think about other barriers, whether that's a language barrier or maybe childcare facilities or providing childcare at certain meetings, especially if it's project-based, then that could potentially remove some participation barriers. So that was the last topic under the community analysis. So as you can see, there are not a lot of recommendations that we have at this point. I think I've heard this in the past from your staff as well as from you specifically, that your general plan has been working for your community, and it really does seem to have a lot of good goals and policies. The next step in this process, though, is to dig in a little deeper to those existing goals and policies and do an audit report where we're really going to start to match up any recommendations that we have to your existing goals and policies where refinements may need to occur. We'll consider some of the recommendations from this report tonight. And we are looking forward to delivering the audit report in December to your staff and then being back before you, likely in January, for a workshop to present the findings of the audit report. And that concludes the presentation. So I do want to remind folks that there are multiple ways to stay engaged. We do have a sign-in sheet. You can always access the project website and sign up directly for constant contact. And then you have, as mentioned before, a lot of good channels of communication that we've also been coordinating with the city on. And then I know Holly would love to get some emails on this. And with that, that is the end of the presentation. So if there are questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions or comments from anybody?
I don't have many things specific to what we presented tonight, but I did want to, you know, from the last meeting and determination, you know, that there wasn't going to be any change to the land use map. Just, I talked to staff a little bit. It seemed like maybe that's a decision based on the cost of putting that together potentially. But my concern, I guess, on that specifically is the amount of open space or agricultural pre-zone designations there that don't provide some type of, you know, future vision for the city in those areas. I mean, unless we're planning on both staying agricultural or just being open space. But, you know, the map hasn't been updated in over 30 years. And it is the opportunity, you know, for you to put your input into the future vision, you know, of the community. I guess my concern, specifically, I did some research previously or prior to this meeting, between last meeting and this meeting. And, you know, there's significant decline in the amount of housing that's been built in town over the last 15 years relative to the 15 years prior. And I think some of that has to do potentially with, you know, I mean, if there's a resolution to that, it may be the vision of those areas that are somewhat undefined. And this is housing that's for sale, not apartments or anything like that. This is housing that's for sale. And there's been almost no starter homes, is what I like to call it, or empty nester-type housing available. So I think the large yellow areas, you know, the density there, you know, is only allowing for a certain size of home. So just the options for, you know, future residents. So I guess it came home for me because my aunt moved to town, and she had a lot of difficulty, you know. She became a widow, had a lot of difficulty finding a place in town because it just wasn't an option size-wise for her. And then, you know, I think of my kids, who they all thankfully say they want to live in Kingsburg in the future. You know, what will be the options for them? You know, I want, for them, like for me, to be a homeowner, you know, and have an option to live within the community. So with, you know, without that future housing stock, what are the opportunities there? And I guess, I mean, it's been 30-plus years. So I don't know, I mean, it could be, it doesn't make sense relative to the cost. I was given a pretty, you know, I mean, if it's $250,000 or $300,000 to put that together, I get it. But I think, you know, it may be worth while. I think there's some other ramifications from that. I know the housing element went through that as well between these last meetings. And, you know, there's outside regulations that none of us want but are a reality. And, you know, those are because of future sites, you know, potentially, or the ability to kind of, to at least have the ability to meet those numbers. You know, we're coming up with, you know, there's some solutions in that housing element related to extremely dense zoning, you know, next to existing neighborhoods. And I don't, you know, wouldn't be something that I would want next to, you know, next to myself. So just wanted to, you know, provide that as feedback, you know. I wasn't aware of that previous, you know, the previous meeting. So just my concern would be, hey, maybe take the option or consider, you know, an option to look at that or at least, you know, some types of solutions to maybe avoid some of those cases of housing owner.
Thank you, Sherman. Any other questions or comments? I had a question. On the bike infrastructure is limited, was that before or after? Was that a decision made before or after the Draper Street bike lanes?
If it didn't show up on the map, then it wasn't considered. So if there was a recent improvement, yeah.
Thank you.
Steve, it's like, I think one comment.
Yes.
At Kings, we do see some very nice homes, if you're looking for them. Who also have like 1,600 square feet.
Yeah.
Obviously, a lot of sizes drive the cost of the car. But, you know, we do have a 1,600.
Yeah, that's a good point, Dave. You know, Sherman brings up some good concerns, and I'm glad you guys, you know, have that with 1,600, the one that's 1,600 square feet. But yeah, I think we do need to, you know, look at other options for Kingsburg in the future. So it's definitely something we need to look at.
The north specific plan, do you think, focuses on larger lots?
Yeah.
It is difficult.
Yeah. I think that's, I think that's his point, yeah. Right. Thank you, Dave. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Nope?
I have a question.
Okay.
On the safe and sanitary homes, you mentioned the west side. There's minimal overcrowding in Kingsburg. 26.4% of the households in Kingsburg are cost-burdened. Does that go along with multiple people living in one single-family residence? Does, I mean, like, multiple families living in...
Yeah, the determination for overcrowding is so many people per room, not including certain rooms like kitchens and bathrooms. I don't recall what the exact threshold is, but there's overcrowding and there's severe overcrowding. The overcrowding in Kingsburg is not severe. But yes, it has to do with how many people are living in one unit.
Okay, so if there's a home builder that decided to build a home with, say, a adjacent living quarters or not, I don't want to say an ADU, but like, we used to call them grandmothers, right? Where grandma and grandpa would live. Would that suffice to bring this in more into balance?
Yeah, that would be one option. I mean, presuming that people living in the primary unit are actually have that outlet to move to. Yes, then that would change that threshold calculation.
Thank you.
We do offer. It's very popular, actually, where it's almost like the whole second living area in the home access, you know, to the street or parking.
Yeah.
Certain amount of mother-in-laws, kids coming back.
Adult, yeah.
Need a place to live, and you know, expensive, right? It's very popular.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have future agenda items. And it says we have none, so. Next, we have what everybody probably likes. Favorite part of the meeting is to adjourn, adjourn the workshop meeting. Yeah, thank you. Thanks for showing up, Laura. Glad you made it. Yeah, so thank you all for coming. And with that, I will adjourn tonight's meeting.
Thanks, Vince.
Yeah, thank you.